Okay, it is now six o'clock and I am calling this regularly scheduled meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order. If we could please read the procedures.
Absolutely. The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. When addressing the commission via Zoom, phone, or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the commission as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand when your turn arrives. You will then hear that you have been unmuted. If you are participating in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Way, if you could please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Department announcements. Oh, roll call.
Okay, District One Vincent Ring Hayden.
Here.
District Two Richard Way.
Here.
District Three Robert Scalioti.
Present.
District Four Robert Gibson.
Present.
District Five Celeste Toledo Boca Negra is absent and we have reached a quorum.
Thank you. Department announcements.
Thank you Chair Gibson, members of the planning commission. Good evening. So as I've done from a meeting to meeting, regular meeting, just kind of inform you about the most recent projects that we've received. And these are just discretionary projects, not counting all the over the counter or administrative or building types of projects. So we have four to briefly go over with you today. The first one is a conditional use permit application that we recently received for the property at fifty-eight ninety San Felipe Road, located just at the southeast corner of Shore Road and San Felipe. And this is a conditional use permit application for the production and selling of wood, ground wood chips. And the requirement is a conditional use permit that we will be starting to review. The second is another conditional use permit Madruga at eleven ninety-two Lone Tree Road. And this is for a wedding and event venue that would hold up to two hundred persons per event. And it's located about two point three miles to the east of the Hollister Municipal Airport. We'll be reviewing this application with staff of all the various departments, including emergency sheriff and and the fire department as well to get comments and then eventually bring it before you. At the January seventeenth regular planning commission meeting, the planning commission, your planning commission approved a minor subdivision, application twenty-nine zero 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 nine for Garcia, one-twenty Enterprise Road. And there is a appeal supplemental for essentially two conditions. The minor subdivision is to subdivide a seven point five-one acre parcel into three lots, two point five, two point five, and two point five-one. One of the conditions that's being appealed is the requirements for improvement along Enterprise Road, the full width of the improvements as opposed to half of the improvements of the road. And then the other is regarding the water service, the requirement for sunny slope connection. So that's going to be discussed and we will be scheduling that with the board supervisors for the next meeting of February twenty-sixth. It's going to be for the board supervisors on a regular meeting, a public hearing. And finally, we received an appeal recently for the John Smith Road landfill expansion.
Just a correction on the date, twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Did I get that wrong? Thank you for that. It's Tuesday. Yes. Appreciate that. Thank you. And recently we did receive an appeal application for the expansion of the landfill, for John Smith Road landfill. And we will be preparing that and scheduling a public hearing for that. The earliest that we can do to public hearing notice notification, we would have to send essentially the public notice to the newspaper. Then the newspaper has to receive it. Usually the deadline's on a Friday for them to then publish it on the following Friday. And there's a requirement of ten days for publication before we can have the public hearing. So the earliest that we can do that would be March twelfth. Now I have to make sure that I have my dates right. The March twelfth board supervisors meeting, however, then we still need time to make sure that we have everything ready as staff. So we will work on a day. If it's not the twelfth, more than likely it could potentially be on the following March twenty-sixth meeting. So we're working on that, but just wanted to notify the planning commission that we did receive an appeal. And those were all the items that I wanted to, that our department wanted to share with the commission and the public for today.
Thank you. Public comment. This is the opportunity for public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda but are under the purview of the planning commission.
Sorry Chair, there's two items under department announcements.
Oh, I missed the calendar. Going back, item four point two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the items that we would just kind of want to circle back with you is the ethics training that we postponed. We were supposed to have it on the February seventh meeting. We can either see if you want to discuss that amongst yourself to see if we have a potential date for that, or we can reach out to you during the week to see what dates would work. Whether you want to have it in a special meeting, whether you want to have it at a regular meeting.
Given that we're probably going to be, our brains will be exhausted. Not that it won't be a very exciting presentation, but I think, I think we'd like a special meeting. And I don't know what everybody's calendars look like for March sixth.
Yeah, I already had it penciled in for March sixth, so yeah, that would work.
Commissioner Ring Hayden. Are you available March sixth?
I am.
Okay. Are you available March sixth, sir?
I am.
Okay. There we go.
March sixth it is, thank you.
We'll bring our hot chocolate and smores. And that was it? Okay, thank you Abraham. Public comment. Is there any public comment via Zoom?
I have no hands via Zoom. I do have one card in chambers, Maureen Nelson. Please approach the podium. You will have three minutes.
Good evening. I'd like to just say thank you on behalf of Don't Dump on San Benito. We had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Prado this past week. There was an issue with signage, misunderstandings on a couple sides, and the county was very accommodating and generous and willing to listen to us. So I appreciate that and I'd like to acknowledge that and thank him. I would also like to thank the members of this board for their vote. I know that it wasn't an easy vote. I know that there's some mixed feelings. I would also like to state that to be personally attacked or felt like I was personally attacked for the decision of this board was unacceptable, but I understand the emotions that are associated with it. So I get it, but I just want to raise the concern that we are all citizens of this county. We are all to be respected and we all have our opinions. But again, thank you so much for your time. You put a lot of time, energy, and thought into this. It took a lot of paperwork from all parties and a lot of reading, and thank you for doing your due diligence.
Thank you.
Bridget Beaumont Thorpe.
I think I, hi Bridget Beaumont Thorpe. I think I want to say what Maureen said also. I want to say thank you for the four to one vote and for listening to us and for looking at the EIR and how the impact of the, to the environment and to the people is just enormous. And and another thing I wanted to point out, I want the people to know, the residents, that this waste connection, actually the the county is actually subsidizing the landfill rate for the residency in San Benito County. For probably five years, since two thousand and eighteen, I know for sure, the PACO rate was forty-four dollars seventy-five. And the county has to pay the difference what the waste connection is charging at the gate rate. So again, you know, where is the benefit to the county when, when a county is subsidizing the recology rate? This is just bad, bad business. And again, also I want to point out the waste connection, the trash truck haul route was for ten years Fairview Shore Road. And they just said, okay, we'll just do twenty-five now. And they were not held accountable for the destruction, the road damage on, on these haul routes. Now who's paying for it? The taxpayers. So I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no more general public comment.
Public comment is closed. Thank you. Next item consent agenda. Thank you for putting together all the minutes. I will say that I scanned everything and I didn't see any glaring errors. There was a lot of paperwork to read and it brought back some fond memories for me. So I don't have any additions or changes to the minutes. Does anyone else have any issues with the minutes?
No, I'm good. No.
No? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Regular agenda. Seven point one, General Plan Annual Progress Report.
Thank you Chair Gibson, members of the commission. Good evening once again. So this is an annual requirement that jurisdictions have to report to the Office of Planning and Research and to the state Housing and Community Development. But first, before we sent off the annual progress report for the general plan and also the housing element, we first have to bring it to your bodies, technically just the legislative bodies like the board supervisors or cities to their councils. But we want to make sure to also bring it before you as well as the planning commission and likely get your recommendation to the board once you had a chance to, to review the material and to, to listen to the presentation. As you know, the general plan is a, is like a blueprint of our county and basically talks about the conservation efforts that we have as a county. And we also see the long-term vision of where we want to see ourselves. In this particular case, the document was adopted in July of two thousand and fifteen and is active all the way to two thousand and thirty-five. So essentially it has a twenty-year horizon. And by state law, there are certain requirements that have to be within the document, and there are also other optional elements that we can have. And as you well know, the general plan for the county or throughout the state, the requirements are the land use element, the circulation element, the housing element, the conservation element, open space, safety, and noise. Those are the minimum elements that each jurisdiction shall have. The county of San Benito thought that we should also have an economic development, a public facilities and services element, and administration element as well. So that's all within. And the general plan can be amended up to four times per year. And per section six-five four hundred of the California Government Code, the state requires that all jurisdictions prepare an annual report, as we're doing today, to present and to be adopted legislatively and then sent over to the state. So number one, the requirements for this annual report is one, board supervisors review and acceptance. Two, the annual report should have a status of implementation programs that are in your report, but I would like to present those to you in just a little bit. Also talk about the housing element progress. I'm not going to go into that much because the next item is on the housing element progress and Stephen is going to go through the details on that. The fourth requirement is a supplemental to the Office of Planning and Research and also Housing and Community Development as mentioned. Fifth requirement is planning activities initiated should be on this report as well. Any general plan amendments and information on major development being processed. So we'll get right into the status implementation programs. For the land use, we have urban land use A, Status Implementation Program, urban agricultural buffer requirements, which the county shall prepare and adopt guidelines and regulations for buffer areas necessary to minimize agricultural urban scale residential conflicts. And so as you well know, the county of San Benito, two main things on that, county of San Benito, board supervisors, I believe it was March of two thousand and twenty-three, adopted a resolution to initiate a general plan amendment to start looking into the potential of creating an agricultural element, one that we don't have, although we do have a rich agricultural area in, in our county, we don't, we don't have an agricultural element. So this then because this, this county was looking into the possibility of obtaining a sustainable agricultural lands conservation grant from the state. And, and so when we saw that there was that grant and we saw the opportunity and the likelihood of us obtaining it, we, we went right into going to the board supervisors to have that initiation and they approved the initiation of that. And so as part of that agricultural element, we will look at the urban agricultural buffer requirements and hopefully bring back recommendations to the planning commission for it to be eventually to the board and have those policies adopted. L U B, Agricultural Mitigation Program. The, we've talked about this various times in various different sectors. New development permanently converts prime farmland that is class one soil to non-ag uses. The county should encourage project applicants to preserve an equal number of acres, one to one ratio. And this is another aspect that we will be also reviewing within the agricultural element that we'll be preparing based on the SALT grant. And just to make it clear, we did receive that SALT grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. And so we will be putting that to, to good use. L U C, Right to Farm and Ranch Ordinance. County Land Use Policy three point nine indicates that the county shall protect the rights of operators of productive agricultural properties and ranching properties, even though established urban uses in the general area may foster complaints. And so that's ongoing. No specific action was taken regarding these ordinance in two thousand and twenty-three. Land Use D, Agricultural Tax Assessment Incentives. The policy indicates that update and evaluate tax assessment policies in order to identify financial ways to promote the long-term preservation of agricultural activity. And so what the county utilizes is the Willensum Act. In San Benito County, about seventy-five percent of all privately held land, over five hundred and sixty-nine thousand acres are within the Willensum Act. And so that there's no action that was particularly taken, but we do have the Willensum Act which allows for those tax incentives for property owners who want to preserve agriculture. L U E, Agricultural Industrial Zoning. Policy indicates that Land Use Policy three point six, county should encourage services such as trucking, warehousing, and distribution centers in appropriate locations to provide support for the economic viability of commercial agriculture. So that's ongoing. Staff is more than happy to help property owners who, or applicants who want to move forward with such projects. L U F, Clustered Residential Program. Encourage any residential development proposals in rural areas to use a cluster design in order to preserve the maximum amount of ag and open space. So if there's a property that has a hundred and twenty acres in rangeland and right now the minimum requirement is one dwelling unit per forty acres in rangeland. And so if somebody wants to develop housing within that, they have the ability of potentially doing three units. If it's a hundred and twenty acres, that's forty acres per unit. And so staff will work with them to try to see per L U F, instead of having the homes sporadic, have them more as a cluster type of development. We really haven't had much of that type of development or proposals. Stephen will go a little bit into detail regarding the type of housing that we have had. L U G, Transfer of Development Credits. Land Use Policy four point nine indicates that the county should implement the TDC, Transfer of Development Credit, as an incentive to protect farmland and focus future development away from the most productive farmland. Staff will be reviewing this and providing recommendations to the planning commission during the creation of the agricultural element as well. Essentially, it's programs that counties can have essentially to see if, if properties want to preserve agriculture and they have a certain density that they, that they have, like one unit per five acres in ag, and they have various acres. And, you know, they, they want to essentially work out a deal with a property owner that's maybe closer to the city or maybe within a sphere of influence where services can be rendered, like water, sewer, then potentially do a transfer of development credit to try to see if those, those properties that are closer to the city where services are rendered, that they can have a higher density as opposed to regular, you know, dwelling units per acre, single-family home type of densities. New community review fact sheets. As you well know, the planning commission at the December meeting recommended to the board supervisors the elimination of the new community study areas of the general plan. And at the regular meeting of, first meeting of February, I think it was February sixth, the planning, the board supervisors heard the public hearing and they approved the general plan amendment to eliminate the new community study areas from the general plan. Regarding general plan amendments, the other category within the, the annual progress report, there were no general plan amendments in two thousand and twenty-three. As you know, on February twenty-sixth, as I just mentioned, there was one to remove the new community study areas. In addition, the county began work on its sixth cycle of the housing element updates in two thousand and twenty-three. And so we, we expect to have it adopted in the next few months. And so that would likely be another general plan amendment. And then I mentioned it earlier, I didn't indicate it here in the slide, but we did have the board supervisors approve the initiation of a general plan amendment to include the agricultural element of the general plan. So we'll get started on that. And, you know, even though we have about a three-year horizon to work with the SALT program, there could be a potential for it to be either approved twenty twenty-four, if not, then, then whenever, hopefully soon after that. Not, not hopefully the three-year horizon. Planning activities in two thousand and twenty-three. Planning commission, there were seventeen planning commission meetings, including six special meetings in two thousand and twenty-three. I really, I mean, it's impressive. It's really rare to actually see one seat vacant and it's really in extreme circumstances. It's been really nice to have most, pretty much all planning commissioners all, all here, most, most of the meetings. So that's, that's great. There have been, your commission has approved multiple conditional use permits and, you know, also denied some. So overall has, has processed multiple conditional use permits, has processed multiple minor subdivisions. We've done notice of preparation scoping meetings. Normally that's not a requirement by state that we have the scoping meetings with the planning commission, but your planning commission is involved and wants to have them. So we bring them before you. And we think as staff that that creates more, more of an orderly type of process. So that's great. Multiple San Benito County Code Amendment recommendations to the board. As you will remember, two thousand and twenty-three, we had a few of those, like the housing, some of the requirements on, on affordable housing. Planning commission requirements, regulations, and the SMRA for the mining operations. There was a few that, that we probably for you for recommendation to the board supervisors. General plan amendments that we probably for you for recommendation to the, to the board as well. Locally and in our departments, we've been pretty busy as well, not including all other types of permits like grading, code enforcement investigations and so forth. We've, and these are just issued, that, that have been issued, not, not counting the ones that we currently have, seven hundred and thirty-two building permits in two thousand and twenty-three. So it's, it's been, there's been a lot of activity within our department as well.
Abraham?
Yes.
The seven hundred and thirty-two, that doesn't consist of just housing units, right? That's
Correct.
renovations and other things?
Renovations, yeah. Anything that, that requires a building permit, renovations, rebrew, additions.
Just wanted that to be clear for the record that that was.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You got it. On the aspect of major, major development applications being processed, you've seen this map in, in the past. We have various projects that are either, that are either ongoing. The, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are essentially those that are ongoing that we are, that we're working on. Except for the Strata Verde one, right now that one's on hold, but the Rich Mark, one hundred and ninety- But the, the Richmark, one nine, a hundred and ninety units, the year is being processed on that traveler station off of Zero Road close to one oh one and one twenty-nine. That's being processed right now and, and the ag center that's nearby is the traveler station. Um, that's being processed, but all the other projects that are within. You know, are either complete or under construction or have um, been approved, but not yet um, began construction. And so with that, the staff recommends that the planning commission review the content, um, open up the public hearing and listen to any. Types of comments for or against the recommendation and we hope to um, ultimately have a recommendation either with comments or. Or, or things stated to the board supervisors for acceptance. Thank you.
Before we go to commissioner comments, I'd like to open up to public comment. Is there any public comment regarding this presentation?
There are no public comments in chambers or via Zoom.
Public comment is closed. Back to the commission. Commissioners, Commissioner Wade, do you have any comments? Okay. Commissioner Ringhaden? Come back to you?
Yeah, can you come back?
Okay. Commissioner Scagliotti?
Oh yes, I just have a couple of questions. Of the seven hundred and thirty-two building permits issued?
Yes.
How many for like just single persons that came in and wanted to build a house on a piece of property? And how many were developers?
We can get that information back to you specifically, but yeah, like Chair Gibson indicated, it's just uh, very, varies.
I just want to know how many, how many people that are just building for themselves.
Yes.
Against this number, against how much are from developers?
And, and just so you know as well, all of that information is also readily available for the public. So it is a public uh, document and. So I definitely don't mind bringing it back, bring it up to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. So most of my questions were answered by the SALT grant.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be working on those and I want to make sure that all those things are addressed in there because I've been asking for years to look at them. The one question I had was on circulation element, C dash A, update road standards. I was told in the past that they dropped the standard of construction so that to save money. Uh, what can be done to bring that back up to a higher standard?
Good question. So that, that is a legislative of action. And yeah, that, so the level, the level of service usually is something that. That we look at and want to as a community uh, feel comfortable with. And if that is something that's. It is not of comfort regarding the, the, the standard that we're in, uh, we can, we can look into that and see how we can do it to come, bring it back.
If you could and, and be expeditious with it before the board hopefully adopts the new impact fees because, because I think if we. Have a higher standard, those impact fees can be bumped up to accommodate whatever new development comes in, in the next five years. So I think if, that's something important that if you could run through us and we could recommend to the board to. Look into increasing that and what the financial impacts would be.
If I was to standard lowered. That's, but, but it wasn't based on the vehicles that are used. Some roads need uh. To have, have the ability to, you know, have bigger vehicles on it. How, how did, how did you develop that standard?
Correct. So we, we can bring that back to you, Commissioner Ringhaden, to, to see, basically to explain what are the different levels of services and then. Which one is the one that, that the county adopted and, and I don't have that information readily available to if, what it was and how it was. You know, uh, demoted too, if that, if that's the case. So let, let us, let us take a look at that. We'll work with our engineers and. And see if we can bring that, um, because that, that is important.
Commissioner Wade, back to you.
Um, yeah, thanks. I, I actually do have at least one question. It's pretty specific. Uh, looking at this map of major development applications being processed regarding items seventeen and eighteen, the traveler station and the ag center.
Yeah.
Those are being processed separately? It's the same developer, right? At, at the same location essentially or?
Essentially across the street. It's, it's essentially across the street. So, so Zero Road traverses both, both uh, projects and. Traveler station came in uh, quite a bit before.
Right.
I think that there was some, something to, there was some type of uh. Some type of discretionary permit that was issued on, on ag center first, I believe.
Okay.
Um, but, but um, it was a different then, it, I think at that point it was just on land subdivision or.
Okay.
Or something to do with zoning. And then, and then it just recently came in a few months ago.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We rezone the ag, the ag, San Minato Ag Campus. We changed the zone into commercial.
That, that's what it was. I think it was maybe at least two years ago or more, probably.
Nothing's come forward yet with the travelers' station.
Correct. We're currently working on. Yes, that's good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yeah, I have one question. You mentioned something about lowering the standards. Is that on roads?
Yes.
And the reason they did that was?
I was, I would assume because you can spend less money.
So that means like, instead of having to do both sides of the road when you do a development, you only had to do one side? Is that what this is about?
When, when the county would build roads, instead of having a sturdier road with more base rock underneath and thicker asphalt, they. Skipped a little.
I get it. Okay.
Get more done with what little we have.
And that's what we're facing, the issues we're facing today. Thank you.
You're welcome. So yeah, we'll, we'll get back to it. As you know, um, all the different elements, even though they all have to do with mostly planning. Uh, like, you know, all the different elements that they're, they're focused on certain departments, like circulation would be more public works and engineering. Economic developments, um, you know, um, on that, um, safety, sheriff, uh, fire. So. So in regards to that circulation, let us work with the, with the engineering and public works and then, and then maybe we can come back and do like a presentation or some, to that effect.
Sounds good. And then actually, if we could get a presentation on uh, Lover's Lane and how things are going out there, that would be nice. After the winter rains that we received. Commissioner Ringhaden, any further questions before I?
I, I, I just had a, a couple of questions. I, and maybe it's just me not knowing, the cluster design, can, can you? Expand on what that means?
Yeah, absolutely. So essentially for the, for the cluster type, it would be uh, as, instead of having. Units to be more separated on a, on, on a piece of land. For example, the, the rangeland zoning designation, the rangeland zoning designation allows for one unit per forty acres. And so if there's a piece of property that has a hundred and, a hundred and twenty acres. That means that that property can have up to three units on, on it. And so in order for, for. The county to preserve or conserve agriculture, the, the homes really should be clustered or, or in a, in a particular location. To be able to have more of an open space area or more of an ag uh, land area. Um, so, and that's just raised land. Agricultural land uses are more of one unit per five acres. So if we have a hundred acres, that's potential of twenty homes. And so, you know, but that would require a whole different process. But the, the goal is to try to cluster them. So that way, or put them not, you know, not, cluster kind of sounds, I mean, that's a word that's within the document. But still, you know, have, have proper separation, but, but still have them more in a general location and have more area for ag.
If say a developer were to buy, uh, just throw out there, Anderson were to buy some property out there.
Sure.
Would they be able to build the way they have in the past or would it be what you just said?
Good question. Good question. So, so depending on, on the zone, so if, if it is.
Quasi.
Yeah. So if it is, if it is on a. Okay. So if it is based on the zoning, so if it's a zoning, as I mentioned, like with the ag example or, or the um, rangeland example. Would be, be what I, what I said. If it's in a zone like residential mixed, which would allow, um, at this time it would allow. Up to twenty units per acre, then, then they would, they would be able to um, meet that requirement. They would, they would propose. A plan for staff for us to review and we would make sure that it, that I met that requirement.
And, and if I can interject, an example of the cluster would be Dunville Estates as opposed to Stonegate or. Hidden Valley or Ashford, whatever it is.
Okay.
They're all in one area and then you still have open space that can be leased out or grazed, whether it's uh, farming or.
But it, but, but it's limited to, it can't be, you can't only put so many units. In other words, that has to be determined. I mean, you have to say this is going to be.
Yeah, so many, so many units per acre, but it's, instead of having them spread out, everybody gets five acres or whatever. You put the homes closer together and then you preserve the open space for some sort of purpose.
It doesn't seem like the developer would go for, I mean, if you're.
They have in the past.
I think that's great.
And we can ask them in the future as opposed to doing what we've been doing.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's important.
Great.
I had just another question here. I'll, I'll limit it to that. Uh, seven hundred and thirty-two permits were issued?
Building permits, correct.
Building permits were issued in twenty twenty-two?
And, and twenty, and yeah, in the year twenty twenty-three, yes.
Is that both? Twenty-two and twenty, uh, maybe I'm missing?
Just on the twelve months of, of, from January to December twenty-two.
So my, my question is, I'm just curious, h- how many? Red tags were issued in that same timeframe? Just curious.
Red tags? Like code enforcement violations?
Yeah, you know, the homeowners will sometimes, you know, they'll buy the home and the yard is not done. They'll add, for example, a, a gazebo that they bought at Costco. And then realize, oh my God, this doesn't meet the standards.
So generally, the code enforcement department receives in, in average of about five violation requests per, per week. So, so um, the, the code enforcement department, you know, they, they're not necessarily actively. Looking for violations. I mean, unless there's a blaring type of violation that they see that's health, health safety or life safety. But um, they, they're really uh, you know, most, mostly responsive or our code enforcement officers mostly, mostly responsive. And uh, there's about five or so per week and then there's uh, approximately. Not too long ago, it was well over a hundred pending code violations that the county had. The most recent, it, it was approximately one hundred. Within the last week or so, we, we looked at it. So, and then our county council has been really good about meeting um, with code enforcement. And looking at any types of legal requirements. Um, I believe it's, is it, um, every Friday, I believe it is. So. It's, it's um, something that we take serious. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last call, commissioners? Any comments? Commissioner Wade?
Yeah, more of a question for, I guess, for you, Chair Gibson, uh, or, or for Abraham.
Yeah.
What, what action, if any, are we being asked to, to take on this tonight? Are we just receiving this informationally or are we?
Good question. Good question. Thank you, Commissioner Wade. So yeah, the, um, the hope that we, we have is that you. Recommend the, the document to go to the board supervisors for acceptance.
Okay, that's what I was afraid of because um, you know, look, looking at things like O U dash B. Um, staff will be reviewing this in more, more in detail. There, there's not enough, you know. Depending on what changes in there, if anything, uh, you know, the wording like shall encourage project applicants and the one-to-one ratio and all that. We, we've talked about that in the past and possibility of changing that.
Yes.
But if we're being asked to recommend this document go to the board of supervisors, then we don't know what changes are pending. You see what I'm getting at?
I, I am definitely. So, so to respond to that, Commissioner Wade, that's actually, those are the actual. Policies that are in the general plan when it was adopted in two thousand and fifteen.
Right.
So what we're, what we're responding to on that is that we are not going to be looking at them to. Uh, modify those or change those because there was action in twenty twenty-three directing staff to start looking at those. And so as, as indicated. We will be working with um, uh, with the, with, through the SALT grant process. Through the creation of the agricultural element to start looking at those. So as it is right now, that's, that's how the general plan states them. But what we're indicating is that we've taken direction and we will be looking at working um, with the planning commission and eventually with the board. To make some adjustments.
Okay, well, then I, I guess it depends on the wording of whatever motion we are asked to adopt. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, we'll, we just adopt it as is and then as we go through the year, we'll continue to work on the general plan through the SALT grant and. Hopefully protect and preserve our agricultural heritage.
Correct. And I just want to add one more thing, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair. The uh, it, it's very important for. For the community to be able to know that the general plan update and the housing element update progress, annual progress. Are being looked at by the planning commission and the board and, and then being, being sent off to the state office of, of planning and research. And community and the um, housing and community development for various reasons. One main reason is. You know, knowing that the general plan was adopted in two thousand and fifteen and we're just not shuffling it off. We, we are actually. Indicating that, you know, we've had seventeen planning commission meetings this last year. We are working on implementation. Every discretionary permit that goes before you has findings of consistency with the general plan. So we're, we're indicating to you that. This is, you know, what we are, um, we're working on implementing those, those findings of the general plan. And two is that a lot of grants from the state are, are dependent on, uh, you know, does, does the. Does the jurisdiction have a general plan um, i- in effect? And, or have they kept up with their annual reports? And a lot of the times, grants are competitive. And one of the main questions is. If, if you have an act, if you have one that has been adopted and certified and you're doing your annual progress report. You know, you will get high points on, on the competitive side of that grant. If, if it's, if you don't, then. Then it's going to be harder to, to obtain that grant. And then there's grants that are non-competitive that they just say. Have you done your annual general plan progress report? Yes, we have. Well, here you go then. There's a certain amount of funds for park creation. For um, housing, things of that nature.
It doesn't mean we can't continue to change the general plan because it's constantly in flux. It just means we're checking in with the state and saying, this is where we are.
Yes.
Going forward and we just do it every year. It's a kind of an administrative matter.
And you said we got four shots at this, right?
Every year. And they can be small or they can be massive if the board finds the money to make a massive change.
I have a question, goes back to Mr. Wade's uh, question. It's a one-to-one ratio for agricultural that we go to development to ag. Didn't we ask that to be like one to five or something? Didn't we ask something bigger?
That's the SALT grant. Through that process, we will hopefully get the general plan changed this year or early next year, preferably this year. But we'll, we'll change it. That's just letting the state know that we're working on things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Are we good? Okay. So then I will make a motion that the planning commission accepts the twenty twenty-three general plan annual progress report. And we recommend presenting the report to the board of supervisors for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Hi commissioners, it's nice to see you on this side of the podium. It's been a while. And as a refresher and for those in the public, my name is Stephanie Rec. I'm an associate planner with the county. I cover the duties of the housing coordinator. So I'm here to present the twenty twenty-three housing element annual progress report. So, and before we discuss the report, I want to provide you with a brief uh, review of what the housing element is. So the housing element is a component of the general plan, um, but it is updated more frequently than the general plan. So like Abraham shared, the general plan is updated every twenty years, but the housing element is updated every eight years. So the housing element is used to identify adequately zoned sites that meet the share of regional housing needs for all income levels. It is also used to develop strategies to provide for and meet those needs. So the housing element includes the regional housing needs allocation, otherwise known as RINA. Um, which is the state's projected housing needs for our area, um, that they determine that we need to construct to meet our future housing demand. So the housing element also provides identification and analysis of uh, existing um, housing needs. So it includes statements of goals, policies, financial resources, quantified objectives, um, that are related to the development and preservation of housing. So there are five broad goals within the housing element. Um, to address each of these goals, the county has implemented sub-goals and programs. The purpose of the sub-goals are to focus various aspects of the main goals and the purpose of the programs are to provide access and resources. To meet all of these sub-goals. So goal one is to focus on the availability of housing. Within this goal, the county has implemented eight sub-goals and operates eleven different programs. Goal two is to focus on the development of housing. Within this, the county has implemented nineteen sub-goals and operates nineteen programs. Goal three is to focus on the maintenance of housing. Within this, the county has implemented six sub-goals and operates six different programs. Goal four is to focus on providing equal, equal housing opportunity. Within this, the county has implemented seven sold, sub-goals and operates twelve programs. And goal five is to focus on energy conservation. And within this, the county has implemented seven sub-goals and operates five different programs. So Table D in your housing element report details the progress made with regard to each of these sub-goals and programs for the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year. And a little later on, I will, I will hit some major developments. So the, the fifth cycle of the housing element spanned from January first, two thousand and fourteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The sixth cycle of the housing element began on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three and was banned till December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty-one. So you'll notice there is going to be some overlap with regards to units reported for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-three. Units issued prior to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three are included in this fifth cycle report, and units permitted after June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three are included in the sixth cycle report. And so the report you are presented here with today is the sixth cycle report based on the California Department of Housing and Community Development's, HCD's, direction. So what is the housing element APR, the annual progress report? Annually, our jurisdiction is required to submit a report which details the status and progress we have made in implementing our housing element. The report details project applications, issued building permits, certificates of occupancy, and annexations and changes to public land for the calendar year. Once the report is complete, it is submitted to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, OPR, and HCD. And then should you choose to recommend this to be presented to the Board, it will present it to the Board, tentatively, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. And Commissioner Scagliotti, this report, I believe it's Table A two, shows all residential permits that were issued for two thousand and twenty-three. It tells you whether it was an independent developer, an individual application, or whether it was part of Anderson Homes or so on and so forth. Unfortunately, because the slide, the table is about forty characters long this way and two hundred characters long this way, it's hard to print out in your report. I will happily send you the electronic version, and it's going to have all those numbers you requested for how many versus independent or developer.
Thank you.
Okay. And so with regard to the sixth cycle housing element update and its timeline, January of two thousand and twenty-one, the county signed a memorandum of understanding between the Association of Monterey Barrier Government, AMBAG, and the San Benito County Council of Governments, SBC COG, to have roughly seventy-nine thousand dollars allocated to, to San Benito in regional early action planning REAP funding. This funding was then allocated for the housing element update process. In September of two thousand and twenty-one, COG received the RENA determination of five thousand and five units for our three jurisdictions. In October of two thousand and twenty-two, COG adopted the RENA methodology for the allocation of those units for our three jurisdictions. And on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, the County of San Benito, the City of Hollister, and the City of San Juan Batista, in partnership with AMBAG, held a preliminary housing element workshop to gather public input. This input has been used in the update process. In November of two thousand and twenty-two, the methodology was approved by HCD and then distributed to the three jurisdictions, and in the next slide, I'll review that breakdown. In December of two thousand and twenty-two, the county issued a request for qualification to find a consultant to work on the fifth, sixth cycle housing element. In March of two thousand and twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors approved a contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates to conduct the housing element update, which we are currently working on. Then on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the County of San Benito felt, held its first independent housing element workshop with Kim Lee Horn and Associates to provide the community with an overview of the update process and to collect more community input. I say it was independent because it was independent of the other two cities, it was only for San Benito County. And so December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, was the statutory deadline for all San Benito County jurisdictions to have their housing elements submitted to the state. HCD provides a grace period of April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Most jurisdictions across the state have not been certified by their respective deadlines, but HCD does not penalize jurisdictions as long as they continue to make progress and communicate with HCD, which our jurisdiction has done. And staff are currently working on portions of the administrative draft and hope to have a public draft out soon and for a public comment period of thirty days or longer. And then the public draft should be adopted by the Board of Supervisors before being submitted to HCD for certification. And so here is our RENA allocation methodology option F that was adopted by COG and approved by HCD. You will notice a total of five thousand and five units were allocated to our three jurisdictions listed in the column on the right marked RENA. Unincorporated San Benito County was allocated seven hundred and fifty-four of those units to be broken down at two hundred and forty-six for very low income, a hundred and ninety-eight for low income, a hundred and three for moderate income, and two hundred and seven for above moderate income. Additionally, the county is required to report on extremely low income units, which is a default number that is one-half of the very low income units. So in other words, we are required to report on another hundred, not another, on a hundred and twenty-three extremely low income units that would otherwise be included in the very low income category. And so I would like to point out that as a county, we are only required to plan for these units within our housing element by identifying sites that are adequately zoned to meet these needs. We are not required to fund the construction of these units. So some work accomplished in two thousand and twenty-three included in the report is the adoption of amendments to our inclusionary housing ordinance, the adoption of a thirty-dollar in-lu fee for affordable development, the completion of six pre-approved ADU and JADU plans to help future applicants with the cost of developing site plans, and the completion of Riverview Two, a one-hundred percent affordable, income-restricted, self-help development. And finally, I just want to point out that all development applications over five units will have to comply with the adopted inclusionary housing ordinance. Staff continue to work with developers and incoming applicants to satisfy affordable housing needs. Should a development application come in with affordable housing, the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors.
Before you go to the next slide, can you just clarify what the adoption of a thirty-dollar in-lu fee means?
The county adopted a thirty-dollar in-lu fee to the master fee schedule for all developments, so an affordable housing developer or any developer that has affordable housing in there would, would be able to pay, if they have a fractional unit, would be able to pay an in-lu fee of thirty dollars a square foot. And, and that goes into the county's inclusionary housing fund, which can then be used to support additional inclusionary housing.
Thank you, I just wanted to get it in there that it's per square foot, not thirty dollars flat.
Thank you, I can edit that in the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Table B reports the number of units for which permits were issued to demonstrate progress in meeting the jurisdiction share of RENA for the sixth cycle. So for the portions of the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year which are included in the sixth cycle, two hundred units were permitted in the above moderate category. The county has already nearly met their goal for above moderate housing, and this summarizes units permitted within the first year of an eight-year period of time, which will encompass the sixth cycle. And so staff request that the Planning Commission receive this report, accept it, and recommend that it be presented to the Board of Supervisors to be submitted to OPR and HCD by April first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Before we go to the commission, is there any public comment regarding this item?
There is no public comment in chambers or, or via Zoom.
Okay, thank you, public comment is closed, back to the commission. Commissioner Way?
The number at the bottom of Slide Eight, the bottom right corner, forty-five, what does that represent? I, I can't make any of these numbers come to forty-five.
Slide Eight.
Oh.
Uh, that was a mistake, that's my, my, my mistake. That shouldn't, that number shouldn't be there.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
No, I have no questions.
Commissioner Ringhaden?
I don't have a question.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the two thousand and twenty-three housing element annual progress report with the changes to the slides for the total number of units remaining on page four and the thirty dollar per square foot information. With those changes, I'll make the motion to recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt the two thousand and twenty-three housing element progress report. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, four zero, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. On to public hearing, item eight point one, subdivision of twenty point oh eight acres.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Michael Kelly, Senior Planner, and I am presenting the nineteen seventy-one Thomas Road Minor Subdivision, one lot and two, two lots. Here we go. I'll talk about the location, I'll talk about what the project is, talk about how it complies with California Environmental Quality Act, how it complies with the general plan and zoning, the land use consistency, and what the staff recommendation is for this. Here is the property, six and a half miles southeast, south, southeast of downtown Hollister. Go out South Side Road and out past, well, along, basically along the San Benito River, and then down Thomas Road, and you have the project site down here. This is the project site and the terrain that is around there. Here's Thomas Road, and the property is mostly level and, but it's up against some steep terrain over here. Here is the residence that's already on the property. This would be the, the quarter of the property that would split, be split into its own piece of property. And then there are other three-quarters down here with agricultural-type buildings, a barn, and a storage cover here. Here is the site plan with, as I said, the northern quarter of the site, five point three-one acres, split from the fourteen point seven, seven acres toward the south. As I said, existing residents up here and barn and shed, and also two wells. One to serve parcel one and the other to serve parcel two. There is no construction proposed by this application, it's just simply drawing this line across the property. Just another view, a close-up view, if you would like to see that. Again, the northern quarter with the house, five point three-one acres, and the southern three-quarters with the shed, the barn, and the two wells, one per lot. Just that both of them happen to be on parcel two. Some views of the site, if you were to go there. Here we're looking southward toward, uh, um, southward on Thomas Road and the San Benito River Valley toward Pinnacles in that direction. This is in the middle of the property, well, actually more like the middle of where the residential portion of the property is from the driveway, looking southward. And then the next one is on the driveway for the residential area, looking up toward the hills to the east. How the Trace Pinos coming, well, way over the hills. And again, on the driveway, looking westward toward the hills. The Thomas Road in, Thomas Road here, San Benito River here, and deep in the hills, San Diego Road and Hollister Hills Park somewhere up there. And the residence that's on the property now, at the north end of the property, facing north here. The property is in the agriculture, general plan, land use district, and it's in the zoning district of agricultural, productive AP, which are nearly the same in what they're intended to be, and this project is consistent with that. It's consistent with the one dwelling per five acres standard, the five acre minimum of the AP zone fitting into that standard. Um, one policy that's mentioned in the staff report is the policy of agricultural viability of small parcel sizes, which talks about showing viability of parcels under forty acres, viability for agriculture. And this is already under forty acres, at twenty acres. The, the northern lot would be five acres, but the southern lot would be fourteen acres, fourteen point seven, seven acres, which at least can be said that it is eligible for Williamson Act-type agricultural preserve for, for aro crops and certain other types of crops. So at least it could have that as just one measure of agricultural viability. The, I'll also say that the zoning as it is allows this, just about the same land use without this subdivision. Drawing the line doesn't change so much what can be done with the land as it is already. It could have one dwelling per five acres with or without this subdivision. So the subdivision, under zoning code as it's written right now, does not really make so much of a change in the intensity of the land use. Now, the California Environmental Quality Act, staff is looking at this as exempt from the detailed review under, under CEQA on three bases. One is the common sense exemption. Does this have any, can an argument really be made that this will have a reasonably foreseeable significant impact, an impact that cannot be mitigated, and that just could not be said? This is, there is no construction proposed, except that there would be road improvements required as part of this, and it would simply be changing the shape of the road that is already there, improving the road that's already there. So it would not be a significant impact. No plans for construction, no disruption planned for environmentally sensitive areas. I mean, there is a fault zone that goes through the property, but there is much usable land that's outside the fault zone, and the fault zone also can be used with proper care and with proper attention to where the fault actually lies. And as I said, zoning already allows just about the same land use as is there. Again, the second basis is that the CEQA has the exemption for existing facilities. That's to say, the roadway that's already there, the improvements would just, as I said, change the shape of the road. It's not like it's turning a two-lane road into a four-lane road. So as such, it's just keeping the same level of use of the road possibly, and so this fits within the existing facilities exemption. And the third of the three is minor alterations to land. All the alterations to land would be on slopes of ten percent or less in grade, and no removal of special trees. And the road improvements are not in the fault zone, not in wetland, not in waterway. So it's not a sensitive location. This project qualifies for these three, and that's found in the resolution in the findings. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the staff report, review the draft resolution, including the findings and the conditions of approval therein, and receive public comment and adopt the resolution, including the findings, to approve this minor subdivision, subject to the conditions and the findings in the resolution.
Okay.
Can you receive questions if you have any?
Not at this time. Does the applicant wish to speak? Or the applicant's representative?
Anne Hall, applicant's representative.
Good evening, Anne Hall with San Benito Engineering. I am here on behalf of the applicant. We have been working with the county on this and do not have an issue with the conditions as proposed, with one exception. And that has to do with the road improvements. I know some of you may, actually, I don't know if you're familiar with Thomas Road. This subdivision is located within a half mile of the end of the county road. There are probably four parcels that touch the road beyond this project, about, I'm guessing about ten that are actually served by it, because some have driveways that go through other parcels. But the road improvements here serve very few people. And the cost of road improvements under condition twenty-four and undergrounding utilities under condition twenty-seven far outweigh the work being created, you know, what is being created. outweigh the work being created, you know, what is being created by this project. So we would like you to consider deferring the road improvements on this project until there is some more significant reason for them in this area, but we'd be happy to discuss that with you.
Thank you, Ann. Let's go to public comment before we come back to the commission. Is there any public comment regarding this item?
There is no public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay, public comment is closed, back to the commission. I have no issue with striking twenty-seven, however, my thought, since we've set a precedent on twenty-four, would be the opposite, actually.
I don't believe the applicant is requesting that twenty-seven be struck, she said that they only had an issue with twenty-four.
No, they didn't want to underground the utilities, is that correct, Ann? You wanted twenty-seven struck? Or deleted?
Correct, I was just requesting twenty-four and twenty-seven, but twenty-seven to be struck and twenty-four to be deferred.
I see.
I make a motion that we strike twenty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
And for number twenty-four, they have to do it.
The full, the full width?
Full width, both sides of the road.
Of the entire property line?
Yes.
Of both, of the twenty-point-eight-eight acres?
Yes.
I mean, it's not even a, what is that road, I was there yesterday, it's fifteen feet wide, it's not a very wide road. We just do, we should fix that lake, though, where the barn is, the dolomite has obviously raised that section so all the water pours off onto the road there, and that is a concern for me, and I don't know how we can fix that drainage issue, other than raising the road,
I would say that was the third lake that I saw on Thomas Road when I drove it today, you know, the other two being in the two miles before you even get to this property. This is probably not something we're going to agree on, um, I don't, you know, we're requesting deferment of half the road, you're talking about requiring the entire road, it's just not, this is creating one parcel, you know, it's creating one potential, not even a additional home, because as Mr. Kelly presented, they have the right to build a home on that property without subdividing it. So when you're doing subdivision, I understand the county can ask for the applicant to alleviate the impacts of that subdivision, but the impact, there is no impact on the road, and the road itself is, subdivision is not a roads improvement program, it's, they are required to alleviate their impact, but if their impact is nothing, I don't think it justifies doing full road improvements of a road that they are not fully responsible for. So my, if this is something, um, you're not willing to consider, I think the applicant would like to request a continuance to maybe have further discussion on this subject, because they do not agree to doing full road improvements for the full frontage of their project.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Abraham or Sean, this is our one opportunity to have a condition, right? If we were just to prove the subdivision with nothing, once, you know, the building, the building permit doesn't come to us, that goes, that's a staff issue, so if we don't do anything now about improvements, our shot at that is, is done, correct? We don't get to go back and say, oh, well, by the way, now you've subdivided and sold it and there's going to be a house, we can't go back and say, oh, well, can you, can you widen the, repair the road? That's not possible, correct?
You could condition it upon development, right? So if, if they were to build a residence on that created parcel, then you would trigger that requirement.
Okay.
Uh, being sold or not, can if they, if, if family builds on it, we can have that condition kick in?
It would run with the land, yeah, it would run with it, correct?
I think in this particular instance, I would be okay with that, certainly not the precedent we want to set going forward because of the condition of the county. So is that, is that language acceptable to the commission, that upon a building permit being issued for the, the, what is that parcel number? Parcel Two, upon a building permission, permit being issued for Parcel Two, that the full width of the road along the entire length of the property being parcels one and two be improved? Is that acceptable to the applicant? If we're willing to?
Defer it.
Defer until a building permit is issued on Parcel Two?
I believe so.
I mean, that's about as far as we're willing to go, so it'd be up to you.
That would be acceptable.
I was, I was gonna say, you could continue it for, to give the applicant time to consider that, and then come back, it's up to the board and that.
I think we'd, if, I think we'd be okay with the deferred improvement upon pulling a housing, a, a building permit on Parcel Two.
Okay.
If we say this is conditional on the permit, there's, they're obligated either way, whether we suggest this now or then.
So the applicant is willing to have a condition based on future building permit.
Okay.
So the, the language? You should also have it recorded, so that it runs with the land.
Okay, and that's, is that part of the, the condition, that it be recorded?
Well, typically, the, any unmet condition would be recorded on the map, I mean, that's normally a requirement.
Right.
So it would be on the map rather than a separate document?
Okay.
Or are you asking for a separate?
No, I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so is, is that a, will you accept those friendly amendments to your motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it gets done, it doesn't get lost in the county shuffle paperwork.
So we'll?
Make sure it gets recorded and it gets done.
We'll delete Condition twenty-seven and we will?
amend twenty-four.
amend twenty-four with the language provided by staff. Is that acceptable? Maker of the motion? Fantastic, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four-zero, thank you. Next item is condition, Commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements from the commission?
Yes.
Commissioner Way.
I, I have some. First announcement is, and this is not related to Planning Commission per se, but I think it's important for the general public, if you're not already aware of this, if it's not on your radar, there is a town hall tomorrow night at six o'clock, I believe, at the Veterans Memorial Building here in Hollister regarding the future of the hospital, so I would encourage anyone to, who is able and interested in that to attend, I plan to be there, but not in any official capacity, just as a member of the public. Second item is just general agreement with Maureen regarding talking about issues and not, you know, personalities per se. I've, I've heard this from multiple people, I'm not picking on any one person, it's easy in an emotionally-charged project to get wrapped up in it, but I think we need to focus on the facts and not conjectures. I've heard, I heard a lot of people talking about motives on, on both sides, and we can't know what people's motives are, i- it would be better if we could just stick to the facts as we know them, we can disagree about what the facts are, but we don't have to impugn people's, you know, reasons for, for believing something. The third item is I want to have a discussion amongst the Planning Commission about the potential for changing the way that we conduct these meetings in the future, it's a very minor change, it's a change to the order in which we would do our business. I feel like sometimes what happens is we have a, an informational presentation going on, and then we get to the items on which we have to make a decision, for example, a minor subdivision, and in a case like that, the applicant and the proponents and opponents who want to speak to the particular project have to wait through the informational presentation before their item can be heard. Sometimes that's not a big deal, sometimes there are issues with childcare, there are issues with, you know, getting home to put supper on the table, whatever, it might be more beneficial for the general public if we could dispense with the, the decision-making in advance of the informational presentations, only when the informational presentation clearly has no impact upon the potential decision. For, as, just as a general example, you know, let, let's say that, that we were talking about, we were receiving an, an informational presentation about a potential updating of the code on setback of new homes, and the business being conducted was, somebody wanted to open a winery tasting room in an existing wine business. There's really no nexus between those two things, and it seems like we could dispense with the issue about deciding on opening the winery tasting room before we receive the informational presentation, potentially allowing those folks to get on with their lives if they weren't interested or available for the information. So that's my proposal, and I just want to get this, a sense of the rest of the commission, and, you know, may, maybe we want to wait on this until Celeste is available, but I just wanted to open it up as, as a possibility.
As long as you can get three votes, we don't need to wait. Are there other thoughts from the other commissioners of swapping the public hearing for the regular items, so that we don't have people sitting out there waiting for us to drone on about general plans and other things that they may not have any interest in hearing?
I think that's a good idea.
I think, I have no problem with that.
Okay, do we need, what do we need to do there, boss? I mean, is it just a consensus of the commission?
I think you can do it as your, as the chair, yeah, it's your pleasure as to how you want to order things.
Please swap those going forward, thank you. Yes, if you could just swap the two. Thank you. Any other Commissioner announcements?
Nope, I have none.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned at seven-eighteen, thank you all very much.